Your mic working?
Oh, there it goes.
Best, yep.
I know you love that mic.
It's useful, but you know it. Wow.
Okay.
Serious.
My apologies. I'd like to call this meeting to order on Tuesday, January 28th at 9:00 a.m. And as I do, I just received some sad news. Commissioner Dockery let me know that the Glenna Hodge that chaired our JP4 selection committee passed away yesterday. Her husband left Joe Dono, and so in lieu of an invocation today, I'd like to recognize her service to the county most recently and then also have a moment of silence as we pray for her family and her. So if you will, just bag your heads with me in memory of Glenna Hodge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Indian Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
You're fine. Okay. Next item is public comment. We're not going to open to public comment. You're limited to three minutes per public comment. If anybody has public comment at this time? Please come to the mic, state your name.
Good morning. My name is Ryan Rowney. I am a lifelong resident of Burnet County, Precinct 2, and I'm here to voice my support for the appointment of the interim position of Judge Jones. I think Judge Jones brings a wealth of experience, a track record of serving Burnet County, and is ready to hit the ground running whenever that time comes. My comments aren't intended to disparage Mr. Trevino in any means. I think he is going to be a strong candidate. But for the purposes of the interim position, we need to be real clear that by appointing someone who intends to run for the elected position in 2026, that's an unfair advantage, in my opinion, that gives this person the power of incumbency. And you know as elected officials that when you can tout your accomplishments, that carries a lot of weight with the voters. So I think the politically easy question and decision for you guys is appoint an interim person who has publicly stated he's not interested in running, doesn't plan to run, just wants to serve out this two-year term, serve the county, and then set the table for whoever the elected official is going to be. It's an easy decision, in my opinion. And I've worked with three of the four of you guys in the past. I think I know where you're at. And I hope you'll make the right decision for Burnet County. We all want the best things for Burnet. We've got great people here. Let's calm things down. Mr. Jones will bring a steady hand to the courthouse, which I think is needy right now. So having said that, I won't take up any more time. Appreciate your service. I know it's tough, but that's what you signed up for. So thank you, and God bless Burnet County.
Thank you, Ryan. Any more public comment? All right. Let's see here. I am going to go out of order just a little bit. Our tourism director, Blair Manning, is trying to get on her way to Dallas to go represent Burnet County at a tourism conference. And she has a few sponsorships, so I want to go jump to those and get those out of the way so she can get on the road. So we're going to talk about these specifically. Item number 23, discussion or action regarding contracts, agreements, or grants to be approved and ratified. I'm going to jump to item L, approval of the tourism sponsorship for Jackson Street Jams 2025 series in the amount of $3,600. And I think, since you're here, we're just going to do them one at a time. I'll read them one at a time, and you do each one. I think that's probably the best way to do it.
Okay.
Jackson Street Jams.
Blair Manning from the tourism department. A lot of these contracts go through and sponsorships go through. I've kind of, excuse me, made a few changes moving forward. On the attachments, you'll see, I'll start attaching the very front page. It says what event we're sponsoring, the date of that sponsored event, the suggested sponsorship level, and then how we are using the HOT funds and how those, out of the list of eight that THLA, our Texas Housing and Lodging Association, how those fit in under the funding. So for Jackson Street Jams, the $3,600, it's a series that runs from March through September. There's a list of what the sponsorship gives us, and the way that that applies to the HOT funds is for advertising and socialization of promotions directly promoted to tourism, and then promotions of the arts that directly promote to tourism. It goes into further detail. I'm happy to pass that around if someone does not have those attachments.
Okay.
So that's that one.
Okay. I'm actually going to vote on these separately, too.
I figured.
Okay. Any comments, questions, or motions on item 23L?
I'd move for approval on item 23L. Second.
Okay. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Aye. I abstain, and I have filed the proper CIQ. And for the record, I work for the city of Burnet, who puts on these concerts. So I will not be voting on that. M, approval of the tourism sponsorship for Hill Country Downhill Series 2025, Spider Mountain, for the $1,000.
Yes. So that one, again, their first downhill series was this past weekend. Their last one will be in May. The sponsorship level for that is $1,000 with the list of what we get for that sponsorship, and it applies to the funds for B, advertising, socialization, and promotions of directly promoting tourism, and then E, sporting events expenses that substantially increase economic activity. Spider Mountain is one of our facilities that is also attached to one of our lodges, Thunderbird, that pays into our HOT taxes as well.
Okay. Any comments, questions, or motions?
I'd move for approval of item 23M.
M.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. 23N, approval of the tourism sponsorship for Granite Fest 2025 for $350.
Yes. So this will be the first time that we are sponsoring the Granite Fest. It is the third weekend in March. I'm sorry, I believe the fourth weekend in March. The sponsorship level is for $350, and that applies to the funds from HOT under advertising and socialization of promotions directly promoting tourism and arts.
Okay. Any questions for Granite Fest? Any questions, comments, or motions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Any more questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. 23O, approval of the tourism sponsorship for Music on Main Spring Series 2025 in the amount of $500.
Music on Main is an event that takes place on Main Street in Marble Falls. It is consecutive, Wednesday through Sundays, starting February 26th through the end of May. Our sponsorship that I am suggesting is $500, and that applies to the HOT funds out of advertising, socialization, and promotions directly promoting tourism, and promotions of the arts.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or motions on O?
I'd move for approval of 23O.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. 23P, approval of the tourism sponsorship for the 42nd Annual Blue Bonnet Festival, April of 2025, in the amount of $5,000.
Yes. So the Blue Bonnet Festival is our biggest sponsorship of the year at $5,000. It's also our biggest festival throughout all of Burnet County, bringing in roughly around 50,000 people. That is the second weekend in April. That sponsorship, we actually get some concert tickets, festival tickets for the carnival, and VIP parking passes as well. I will take two of those to make sure that everything else within the sponsorship is being taken care of and that we're paying for what we say we're going to get. The rest of those, we will do a giveaway done on all of our social media as we get closer to the event. And the funding of HOT with that is under advertising, socialization, solicitation. I've been saying "socialization" this whole entire time. Sorry, y'all. And promotions directly promoting tourism, and then promotions of the art with all of the concerts that they will have during that time as well.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or motions?
I'll move to approve 23P.
Second.
Motion is second. Any more questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I abstain. Same song. I filed the deal, and I am on the committee, not only for the chamber, but also for the festival. So I'll be upstanding from that vote.
Awesome. Thank y'all very much.
Be safe heading to Dallas. Okay. We can go back to contracts in a little bit. Herb, do you have anything? Do you want to do it now? Say that again? You want to go now, or wait? We can get it out of the way. Sounds good. Where are we at? Is that 14? 16?
It starts on 14.
Which one do you want to do, Herb?
Your choice.
Thanks, sir. All right, we'll start with 13. They're all in a group here. Discussion or action regarding the release of surety bond number LICX1210569 for Stargazer subdivision. Commissioner Luther.
This is the release for the surety bond on Stargazer, and Mr. Darling and I have rode the roads, and everything looks to be in order. So I would move to release the bond.
Second. Motion is second. Any questions? Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 14, discussion or action regarding the preliminary plat approval for County Road 330 Estates, a public subdivision consisting of six lots on 10.06 acres located in the 7,600 block of County Road 330. Commissioner Collier.
Just a public comment, real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
On items 14, 15, and 16, are these only available in paper form? Do you get any electronic files?
Eventually.
Eventually. So, okay. Because I was just trying to figure out how to make this efficient for us to see them before the meeting. Thank you.
They will be filed in and available when the meeting's over.
Herb Darling, Burnet County Development Services. Gentlemen, this is a six-track subdivision. It has community water provided by the city of Bertram. Their road entries are shared. We have limited road entries. And Commissioner Collier, I know his foreman's looked at them, I've looked at them, two of the entries are existing. So there would only be actually one new entry. But they met the requirements, and this is preliminary.
10.06 acres, I guess that falls underneath the subdivision that are above 10 acres.
No, 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 sir. It's total track size is 10. The average track size is going to be about an acre and 3/4.
Okay.
Six tracks on 10 acres.
But community water through Bertram, no wells.
Yeah, they've got city water runs right.
City water.
Right down 330.
City water runs right through it. They're actually signing their water rights over to the city of Bertram.
Is this notation you have circled here? Have a common entry installed in final plat?
It was, we were looking at the shared entry. There is an existing, I think it says EX, I was writing on that. I think we've got an existing entry right there that's my hen scratching.
And that one's existing, and then the new one's right here, I think.
Okay.
And they've signed their groundwater rights over to the city of Bertram.
They're in the process.
Do they have a well on that?
You know, I'm not aware.
I don't think on that portion.
I'm not aware. It's an undeveloped track.
Questions, comments, or motions?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All those, any more questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 15, discussion or action regarding the final plat of TOWDAH?
TODA.
TODA subdivision, a private subdivision consisting of 24 lots on 54.01 acres located at 122 Shoreline. Commissioner Dockery.
This is a final plat. We've seen the preliminary before. There's been extensive discussions about this subdivision. And the ESD9 has reviewed it as well to comply with their fire.
Fire code.
Fire code. Escaping me.
So 24 lots on roughly 55 acres. Previously, a little history on the property. It was at one time a platted subdivision. We've gone through the unplating process. Would it become all amp in the new one as works develop it? Correx will be providing water to the project.
Okay. Another one with community water. No wells. Okay?
I'd move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions, further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 16, discussion or action regarding a replat of lots 391 through 400 in Thomas Ranch, Section 1, originally Lot 39. Thomas Ranch, Section 1, to be known as lots 391-A, 392-A, 393-A, 394-A, 395-A, 396-A, 397-A, 398-A, 399-A, and 400-A. Thomas Ranch, Section 1, to reconfigure lot lines and streets. Commissioner Dockery.
Just to give the court an update, we changed, they changed the layouts from cul-de-sacs to hammerheads, so they'll lay a little more room. Derek Curtis with ESD has reviewed it and has planned with it. It is actually a replat of a replat, but it's just basically reconfiguring the roads and some lot lines.
Okay. Not adding, just moving lines?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Is there any other requests? If not, I'm going to go back to the top of the agenda. Okay. Number four, discussion or action regarding outlining the format and process to be followed on the Burnet County Judge applicant forums, which are set for February 6th, 2025, and February 13th, 2025. Quick recap, we are still accepting applications for the county judge's position until January 31st. This Friday, the portal will close at noon, and then between noon and 5 o'clock, we will work diligently to get a list of those applicants on our website and out to the public. And then, our first scheduled forum is February 6th. Both of these forums will be at AgriLife in Burnet. And we had set those back when we started the process, but we didn't formulate how the forums would operate. So we want to get that laid out today. I'll get the ball rolling with a general format that I think, and then, of course, you guys can chop it up, throw it away, and start over if you want to. This follows the same similar format as a candidate forum would, as far as format goes like that. And I will tell you that verbally, the two district judges, Judge Evan Stubbs and Judge Alan Garrett, have both agreed to co-moderate this forum. So they'll be asking the questions, they'll be the ones, you know, keeping track and all that good stuff. So that is who we are proposing be that, and they have both agreed to do it together. This lays out at 5:30, doors open. Public and applicants are welcome to come early and have a meet and greet, visit, socialize, and then at 6:30, we'll have our welcome, and then we'll officially open the workshop. And then, for the order in which applicants will be placed at the tables, we'll draw those from a hat. The judges will draw those from a hat. Sorry, I want to be real specific. And in this case, based on other stuff, each applicant will get a three-minute introduction. And then, we will have up to 10 questions prepared. Questions will be based on the feedback we have received so far from the publics that has been emailing us, as well as questions pertinent to the job. The question got brought up. Who is going to help formulate those exactly and decide which questions get asked? And that is going to be a question I'm going to pose to the court, and I'd like some public feedback on that today. I'll finish this, and then we can start over and go through it. And then, I've got two minutes per question for a response per applicant. That process will rotate, who goes first? And then, we'll finish up the forum with a two-minute conclusion in reverse order of how the introductions went. And then, just as a note, between the conclusion of the forum and the next commissioner's court, which is scheduled for February 11th at 9:00 a.m., the public will be asked to email their questions to the commissioners if there are questions they felt should have been asked and weren't asked at the forum. So as a reminder, a part of our process is, on February 11th, we're going to have basically an interview ourselves with the applicants here in court. And through that process, the goal is to narrow down the applicant pool to two applicants. Once the court has decided to do that, the process continues with another forum that very next Thursday, which will likely follow the same guidelines we set out today, as long as we don't find any reason to change it, which, if we did, would be voted on in this courtroom on the 11th, in case we found some reasons that we should for whatever reason, public input, things like that. So the biggest, this is all pretty basic, you know? The biggest thing is how many questions? I put 10, up to 10. Based on a timeline, this will make for a forum that lasts a little bit over two hours if everyone maximizes their time. I got a good feeling everybody's going to maximize their time when it comes to their time to talk. So, and is two minutes per question response time per applicant good enough? And do we give the moderators the ability to allow for extra time? All questions I've been getting and all things I want feedback on. And so I will kind of open this up as a workshop at the moment. It's not scheduled as one, but kind of that format. So we want to hear from you guys. Don't scream out. Please, don't just start yelling at us. Come to the microphone if you have some input or comments. And commissioners, I'm going to open it up to you as well. This is a blank slate, other than what I just read, and you can tweak it how you want.
I don't think it's a good layout. Only question I have is 6:30 seems a little late to be starting it. Could we start it at 6?
We could. Absolutely. Do we, so back to the question, the meet and greet part, you know, I didn't want to just be like, we're starting. Do we want to open the doors at 5:00 and still allow an hour of meet and greet mingling and people to get there, and then start at 6:00? Or is 30 minutes sufficient?
I think 5:00 would be good.
Okay.
Can move everything back 30 minutes.
Yep. So we'll do 5:00, doors open, 6:00, we will get started. And again, this will be our district judges' forum to run once we hand them the reins. We'll be, as commissioners, I think we all plan on attending. It's going to be scheduled as a workshop so we can, just can't take, we will be taking no action and no voting in that meeting. So Ms. Cope, do you have something?
So if you do a two-minute question, is there going to be any rebuttal or any cross?
I don't know.
Well, they're both going to get the same question, correct?
They're all going to get the same questions. Yeah, there's not going to be, this question is for you. And so, in my mind, if the public feels a need for a rebuttal, or if the candidate does, between then and the court date, maybe that's how we can formulate that. Just my first thought, to keep things efficient at forum number one, and to keep it just about the answers.
And then the questions, have you received a lot of questions so far? One question?
We've received a lot, I can speak for myself. We've received a ton of emails. Of those, I've received one that was in the form of a question.
I've received two.
One. I have received no questions.
No questions. Okay, so basically four questions?
And they're probably the same.
They're probably similar. So that's why today, I want, I would like to, a lot of these are going to be job-based and not, you know, political-based, I guess, if you will. We want to know things that pertain to the job. So my hope is that between us, we can come up with some more, and I don't know if the judges are the, if we ask them to kind of go through the things they get from us, and then we also put a plea out to the public now, between now and then, if you have questions that you think need to be asked at this first forum, send them to us.
Well, since they're job-related, what about department heads and elected officials? Have you had any input from them yet?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
In my email yesterday to Colleen and Eddie, I did mention that we should probably reach out to elected officials and the county attorney, of course, being one of them, to get questions that they feel are pertinent to this appointment. And we can still do that. And I will say this, and I don't want to call it a fail-safe, but if we get our 10 questions that are job pertinent and we miss the mark, it's not the end-all, be-all. The next court is another chance where we can get input from the public. If we didn't, if they didn't feel like the right questions were asked, we can do that again. We can ask those questions at that time.
Did you say something about a closing? How long is the closing statement?
I had finished with a two-minute conclusion, and those would go in reverse order from the intros. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Casey Walker, district clerk, elected official. My question is, so currently, I believe there's only two applicants. Is that still accurate?
To my knowledge.
Okay. If there are only two applicants at the forum, is there a way to kind of push that back to where there doesn't have to be another forum, and this can get voted on earlier?
So I did pose that question to the county attorney.
Okay.
And he said that any discussions of that would have to wait until the next commissioner's court, once we pass. court, once we pass the 31st deadline.
Sure, because at the next commissioners' court, there will be another interview process with, with y'all.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's multiple parts to this, so there's not a one-and-done, so to speak, so as far as getting to ask questions.
I'd like to see the introduction match the conclusion of three minutes.
Three and three.
Yes, ma'am. Cool with that.
Commissioners Ryan Rowney again. Hey, I think y'all need to be thinking through if this is a two-to-two tie. I don't know how it's going to shake out. How does this get resolved if there is a tie? Lawyers, y'all should be thinking through this.
You don't get a judge, you continue on until...
Say that again?
You don't get a judge, you continue on without a judge until we can get a...
For, for two years, or what? So I don't know if that's, that's a good solution or not. That doesn't sound like a good solution to me, so we need to get some leadership in place. I don't know if there's any other avenues to explore besides just continuing on like we are, but that doesn't seem to be the, the best solution for Burnet County. So that's my two cents worth on that.
State law, the thing is, and I can let the legals from my understanding, state law doesn't help us in this process a lot when it comes to what-ifs and things like that, so it's definitely a question.
Does that mean if you don't, if you have a two-to-two, it doesn't mean it's permanent two-to-two through the next election? It just means it's until we kind of have the next commissioners' court? Or until you work through it and resolve it, right? That's the way I understand it. We're not going to be without a judge until the next election.
I guess, can, can we put it on the agenda for every commissioners' court?
Come up with a different process and see if that changes things. I'd have to get a majority vote, commissioners, appoint a judge.
Gil Jones, applicant. I can tell you, I've looked at the statute, it's simple, says you all pick, takes a majority, there's nothing else in the law.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, I guess the only thing is coming up with the questions, so. Any thoughts? My first thought is, there needs to be a center point to collecting those and helping curate job questions with elected officials, and maybe that would be Colleen Davis.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Could you repeat that, yeah? So, sorry, I'm just trying to find somebody to help, a go-to to get all of the stuff so that that way questions can be formulated, whether they were, you know, however they come, from the public, from elected officials, and job-related questions, and, and I, you know, based on the timeline, I think if we can have eight to 10 questions, it would be a pretty robust forum.
So, just to help formulate the questions based on what's received and what's, as long as Mr., thank you, as long as Mr. Aradondo is okay with that, I'm happy to help with community now, eh?
I think it's more or less somebody to, if we all get the same questions, somebody can weed through them and...
I'm having help.
Okay. Anybody object to that? Everybody feeling okay this morning? All right. Okay. I guess, is there anything else within the, the times and the amount of time we're doing and the order we're going and all that good stuff? I will say, I've had a request to livestream this event, and I haven't gone to test the internet at AgriLife. That would be the kicker. Good internet would mean that we could stream it. I'm assuming we have decent enough internet, and if it's okay, the setup we have here is not mobile. I don't mind donating my time and equipment to make that possible if there's not a conflict in doing that.
The only other issue we just brought up is, is who's going to do the timing?
The DJs.
Okay.
Are, are their appointment? The DJs are their appointment.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll have, yeah, and we can talk to them how they want to do it, but in, in the past, you get caution card, or, you know, 30-second warning cards, and then stop cards, and then, you know, and then we'll cut your mic off. I did that one time, and I got glareed at. So, now on the live streaming, and there, I won't, this will be a donation deal, it'll be set up, and I'll, is anybody opposed to live streaming it?
I would be cautious of that. Internet does cut out in a certain candidate making a key comment. That kind of puts you in a position of, did you pull the plug on someone or not? I would steer clear of that personally, if I was you as the city commissioner. I'm sure there's multiple folks around the area that can help you provide that service.
Sure.
So have it, just don't have Damon.
I'm sorry?
Have live streaming, just don't have Damon provide it.
No idea, but I'm sure we'll prove that they do. I would, I would be real transparent on this whole process, gentlemen. While I was watching, and Burnet County's in spotlight right now.
Yeah, no, I agree. I would, I would...
Be real cautious about how y'all perceive...
I withdraw my offer to donate it. And to your point, Ryan... No, to your point, commissioners' court right now makes me nervous, the fact that it's got my name on it, and if it cuts out, well, why did it cut out? Because technology is not the funnest thing to be involved in sometimes, but I get your point, and so I will research some options, or, and anybody can, if you guys want to, about getting a live stream done, it's not complicated. The question would be, do we livestream it on our Burnet County page, just like we do commissioners' court? Do you see any issues with that?
Can we livestream it on the Burnet County page? Just like the commissioners' court?
No, there's, there's...
I think that's appropriate.
That's exactly...
It's a workshop.
Yeah.
It's a commissioners' court workshop.
Okay. Okay, valid, and you're right, it does make me nervous. So...
But Damon, if this is a commissioners' court workshop, and you already livestream commissioners' courts, would there be any, I, I get Mr. Rowney's point, I just, would there be any difference? Except that it's not commissioners' court equipment, it would be your own equipment, maybe?
Yeah, we can't move this equipment, that's, that's the reason I thought of it, but I do have some options of people that do not work for me, that have the, that could do it, and that would do as good a job as technology would allow. They're honorable, and I, I can promise you, I vow, no shenanigans. I'm not, and like you said, transparency, I, I think from day one, I think we're really starting to prove that we're going above and beyond in transparency, and I know you weren't inferring that we weren't, but I get it, believe me, every day. So, live stream is a, is a maybe, and there's no need to vote on that necessarily, I guess, unless we want to add it in here and say, if, if it's, if it's an option, we'll do it.
I believe that is something we can vote on with this agenda item, is it? You can?
Roll it into the format? Okay.
With an option to livestream?
If possible.
And I'd like to see the options before we make a decision on that.
Of who's going to do it?
Yeah, whatever, yeah. Who provider, the internet, whether it's strong internet or weak internet.
We can do all those tests and find out. Okay. So I'm going to review this one more time, and I'm actually going to do it in the form of a motion. Is that okay? I make a motion that the applicant forum begin on February the 6th at AgriLife Auditorium at, on Vandevere Street in Burnet. At 5:00, the doors will open, public and applicants will be welcome to come early and meet and greet. At 6:00, the district judges will welcome and open the workshop, and call the workshop to order. We will draw the order, the district judges will draw the order from a hat as to how they're going to sit on the stage. Each applicant will get a three-minute introduction time. We'll have up to 10 questions prepared. Ms. Colleen Davis will be the point of contact to get those questions to, which you can get them via through us if you'd like to, and we'll get them to her. And elected officials are now being asked to get those questions over as well. Questions will be based on feedback we've received from the public, as well as questions pertinent to the job. Each applicant will get two minutes per question for a response. We will rotate who goes first, and we'll wrap up once all the questions have been answered, and the district judges declare it. We will finish with a three-minute conclusion in reverse order of how the intros went. Between the conclusion of the forum and the next commissioners' court on February the 11th at 9:00 a.m., the public will be asked to email more questions to the commissioners if they feel like they have, if they feel like there's some questions that we didn't ask in the forum, so that way we can be prepared for our court questions. Yes, sir?
Breden from the Bolton, who will pose the questions to each candidate?
The district judges. Will be the moderators of the forum.
And they will pose the questions as well?
Will the questions be the same at both forums?
I don't think, I mean, we probably, well, as with candidate forums go, if you go to multiple forums, you are going to have some repeat questions, for sure. I wouldn't want to assume that everybody heard every answer at the first forum, and especially pertinent ones that need to get asked again that are job-related, but I think on the 11th, we might, based on our experiences, we always learn and grow, on the 11th court, we will reevaluate this process for the scheduled one on February the 13th, and either say we're doing it again like this, or we're doing it like this.
The questions aren't going to be announced over the next...
I don't think so. Okay, that's a motion.
I'll second that motion. Could you read it again? No, just kidding.
I have now, no doubts, Jacinta has it. Okay. Is there any comments, questions, or motions? Oh, yes, sir.
Damon, would you guys prefer the questions go directly to them?
They can go to Colleen or to us. Our, our emails are out there through this whole process, so they're easily and readily available. They can come to us, and then we'll send them to her.
Takes one more thing off the plate.
That'd be great if they went straight to her.
They would.
Answer your question, sir.
I don't want to say that they have to, though, I mean, so...
If you would like my email, I will stay after the meeting and provide it.
Gil Jones again, in case you're interested, just for my part as an applicant, I think you've developed a good process, a fair process, one that's going to be open. Transparency is good, and I, I know you'll continue that all the way through. I appreciate your work on this.
Yes, sir. Okay. Not to rush it, any more questions or comments from the court? Jim, you good?
Good, I'm good.
I'm going to open it one more time for you guys to give, give any of it, and, and then I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, goes. All right. Number five, discussion or action regarding the reappointment of Greg Haley to the Campo Technical Advisory Committee. Commissioner Dawery.
Yes, sir. Commissioner, this is, we'd overlooked this last time when I did my appointment to Campo, is there's another armed Campo, the Technical Advisory Committee, and we've had a representative, local engineer Greg Haley sitting on that committee, and we need to reappoint him to that committee.
Okay.
And I would move to, for approval.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further questions, comments? Yes.
Greg Haley, is he an engineer with a company, a private company?
He is.
What company, who's he with?
KC Engineering.
So they're the ones who do all of our county road mapping? I mean, engineering?
We have two engineering companies. We went through a vetting process on that, and we have two that we can use, Willis Engineering and KC Engineering.
Okay, thank you.
Any more comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six, discussion or action regarding the appointment of Commissioner Joe Don Dawery to the Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation.
I had outreach from the executive director of the finance corporation, Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation, asking me if I would sit on this board, which we had a former representative on, and I would like to be appointed to that, to that board. Jim Shaw is the gentleman that was here.
Jim Shaw.
Last con, last commissioners' court.
And...
Having to do with, you know, workforce housing and affordable housing, you know, things of that sort.
Now, is this, hold on, let me read it.
They're also the entity that provided us, last year, I think it was $100,000, that the court was then able to allocate to nonprofit organizations.
So this was the seat formerly held by Mark Mayfield?
No, no. Our former judge was in this position.
But before him, it was Mark?
No.
Oh, no.
No, Mark was, used to be the executive director.
Okay. Oh, I got you. Okay.
He has since retired.
Okay. Well, I make a motion to approve that appointment.
Second.
Although, any more comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, discussion or action regarding the approval of a commissioner to act on behalf of Burnet County Commissioners' Court on behalf of the Wertz Dam Bridge Project. Commissioner Dawery put it on, and I'm going to make a motion that that be Commissioner Dawery.
Second.
Is there any comments, questions, or motions?
I got a question. Carol Plagman, Burnet County. Who's the engineer on your bridge project? KC Engineering?
KC Engineering, yes.
Who's the engineer on your Capital Area Housing Finance projects?
I have no idea, sir. I've never served on that board.
Well, I know who has, you do too. Anyway, same engineers, KC's engineering. Right now, I went back and looked at last year's expenditures. We spend a lot of money on KC Engineering. Thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars a month. How do you know we adopted them?
We did? We voted on it and...
Yeah, I'm about to say, we're, we're...
I know, but I'm just saying.
We're required by law to have engineering companies involved when we go out for...
Well, I understand it, but why, why don't we have competitive bids in here every, on every project, in here every time there's a commissioner court meeting, involve road projects?
I'm sorry, say your question again.
Why don't we have competitive bids in here every time there's a road project, instead of just to write off the KC Engineering? Because that's the way it looks, if you go back and look at the checks that are being written over here by Karen. These guys are getting cut a big check every month.
So the selection of our engineering firm was publicly done, correct?
The engineering bid, it was bid out.
It was? It was competitively bid.
Where are those records at?
Karen's going to have them?
The county clerk posts the awards and the commissioners' court minutes, but I can actually get you a copy of the entire bid, if you would like a copy of the entire bid and all the response.
For the entire last year, 2024?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, thank you, sir. Oh, okay.
What is the status of the Wertz Dam Bridge project?
I think that's why we're getting, I don't have a status report, and that's why getting Judge, or Joe Don involved is going to help us play catch-up. If we're being honest, like, the judge did a lot of this, and so we're trying to play a little bit of catch-up.
It was done without you all?
There was nothing done without a vote from us, but the in-between votes and things like that, to get caught up in the weeds, so to speak, we need somebody to dive into it.
Thank you.
So that we can get those updates. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Any more questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? And then, I guess, on that, as soon as we can get an update, we'd like one. Number eight, discussion or action regarding the resignation of Randy Hartman from the ESD seven board. Randy Hartman was appointed to the ESD seven board once he replaced me when I resigned, so that I could sit in this seat, or as a commissioner, and Randy served, he did great for us. He was a former firefighter out of the Houston area, and now he's headed closer back to East Texas to be with his family. I do want to recognize his service for all the years on ESD, but we received his resignation, and it was effective December the 13th of 2024, and I'll move to accept his resignation.
Second.
Sorry.
It's all good. Motion is second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number nine, discussion or action regarding the appointment of Barbara Postel, Postle, to the ESD seven board to an unexpired term, which expires on 12/31/2025. Mr. Hartman was midterm, and so she gets to serve out one year, and then if she wishes, she can have the opportunity for reappointment, but this will just be for a one-year term. And Commissioner Luther, this is a precinct one resident, ESD seven is split between two and one, so we try to keep the board fair and balanced on representatives.
It is, and Barbara is a resident of the big town of Naruna. I think this is the first, which is as far north in Burnet County as you can get. I think this is the first representation that we've had from, you know, that area. It's grown a lot up there, so I would move for approval.
Okay. Motion is second. Any further discussion on this appointment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Number 10, discussion or action regarding the approval of a background check policy for all employees through the Human Resources Department. Is Jackie here? Why are you still sitting? No, I'm just kidding. Jackie helped us get this policy together, and the attachment is here. Basically, is HR here?
They are not.
They are not, okay. They've all signed off on this? HR signed off. Basically, I know on the first round, once we get this policy, the first round of background checks for our employees will be those that have access to Odyssey, and that is to get us into CJI's compliance. If I say anything wrong, just tell me, but.
Right. I mean, so, all employees should be background checked.
I understand. Phase one is going to be the Odyssey.
Right. So enterprise justice case management, they should be vetted before having access to CJI or PII that they have access to and that software.
Okay. If I understand this right, Karen, speak up. We're going to have this policy in place. We're going to start with all Odyssey users, and then we're going to go to all new hires as they come in, and then we'll eventually get all employees background checked, and then moving forward, every employee will be background checked. Is that accurate?
Right. We'll be using the same platform that the Sheriff's Office uses. They've already done all the jail and Sheriff's Office employees will be using fact clearing house. It's run through DPS. It's three dollars per employee.
Three dollars per employee, and then the Sheriff's Office has agreed to allow use of their mobile fingerprinting, so that that way we can do fingerprints in-house as a part of that, to save money and make the process more efficient.
And to do our CJI's training for those that are using the case management software. Yes, they have agreed to do that.
So what's the difference between the current background check and this background check?
We don't have a current background check. This would be our background check policy.
Over the course of the last few months, we've found some places that we need to improve, and this is a part of that improvement. Step number one. So, the policy, like I said, has been reviewed by IT, it's been reviewed by HR, it's been reviewed by Karen, and it's reviewed by the Sheriff's Office. And then, like she said, just to reiterate, the Sheriff's Office has always done background checks. They're separate, when we say county employees, we don't, they haven't, they're not included in that, so, but now, this will apply to county employees, so.
Right. And as far as CJI's, there are employees that have access to Secure Site and that run criminal histories that have already done this as required by DPS, so this will just cover everyone that has case management access and every new hire.
So when we hire someone with a commercial driver's license, and that may be an HR question, but with a commercial driver's license, is there a check done at that point?
That would be up to the department head doing the hiring previously.
They haven't done that.
I know we've, we've done a few, but anyway.
Jackie, do you have employees now who have not had background checks?
Yes.
Will this pertain to our ISF guys?
No.
These would be for full-time employees?
Full-time employment? Full-time employees.
We do, each precinct, this is an HR question, is it a Jackie question?
Yeah. The policy says full-time, part-time, and volunteer. Anybody that has access to, at least for the CJI's compliant portion of it, anybody that has access to records, and then on the CDL, that's a driver's license check versus a criminal history check, so that's totally different responsibility than that.
But during that process on that driver's license check, wouldn't an offense pop up on it, which would be criminal?
It could, yes, sir.
Okay.
Depending on the clearinghouse, would you use it?
Yeah, so I would say they apply, but I would also say that sometimes, it does, you know, things that come up wouldn't necessarily disqualify somebody from employment.
Right. We'll be following the TLET's eligibility for case management, just because we think it's a good guide to use. It's what the Sheriff's Office uses for their SO and jail employees, so that's what we'll be using as our guideline.
So there are some positions that if things pop up, the statute tells us that we, they can't have access.
Correct.
On that level of stuff, but a lot of our employees, they don't have that kind of access, nor, so, it wouldn't apply.
Right.
Okay?
Just a quick question. Is there any, any way to get the people who aren't background checked? Are we going to get them into compliance ASAP?
Yes. So we're just starting with case management access, because those people have access to criminal justice information and to personal identifying information, and we see that as a priority, and then we'll move to any other employee or new hire.
New hires start immediately. Access, statute-driven, background checks immediately, and then we're going to get all the employees done as soon as possible. I don't?
Hopefully, to help clarify a little bit of it, the, the original, or for all employees, is a clearinghouse, very similar to what many agencies use, and it is a basic Texas TLET's background check. You can go further, you can do a national background check, depending on, on what you choose to do, but that would be for a, the bulk of the employees. Those that have, have access to private information would have to go through the CJI's training, which we already provide through the Sheriff's Office, and there is a, from their page, a CJI's compliant requirement on who can have access, and also violations of when, if it occurred while they were an employee, that they were suspended, and how long they'll be suspended from having a license, and then also, those that are listed as permanent denials. And it's, it's easier to use a, the TLET's background criteria than to put it in your policy as, it then becomes your policy. You can refer to this as the TLET's eligibility criteria.
And it does say in the policy that that's what we're using.
Right. So step number one is approving this policy.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a question.
And just one, one, the simple portion, portion of this is, is an example that we have at the jail. Our, our booking officers have email addresses that are required to be one-user email addresses. The reason we come in, where, where we can be non-compliant is because the Sheriff's Office does not have enough email addresses for all booking officers to have an email address, so we are out of compliance and have been out of compliance, and we've been trying to get to a point where we can purchase a, a county block of emails is what, is what's needed. And so it's called piggybacking when one booking officer checks in somebody, and then they walk away from the terminal, and another booking officer's got the ability to use it. All of, anybody that has access to those has to have their own individual access, not a, a group access, so.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
I just want clarification, because the policy that is, was submitted mentions nothing about employees. It is only for new hires. So, before y'all sign this, the purpose says for new hires. It does not mention employees who currently already have access to any of these things. Every employee in my office has to be background checked through Identico already, and we have to pay for that in order to get access to Texevere, which allows us to issue birth certificates for anyone in the state of Texas. So my employees will have to do that whether Burnet County does it or not, because Texevere will not take the Burnet County version of a background check. I just want people to understand that I still will have to ask for money to get everyone background checked, but this policy does not mention background checking existing employees, so.
It should say new hires and current. I know we made a lot of edits and modifications, and there was a last second amendment that also had a section for elected officials. I don't know if that's the one that y'all have.
It says additionally, employees must receive CJI's and general role certification before being granted access. So I don't know if that is only new employees or not, so.
That's for enterprise justice case management. The CJI's training is specific to the case management access.
So, it should say all new hires and current employees?
Yes, it should.
Okay. I would modify my motion to, with that amendment.
Second.
Is that friendly to your second, sir?
Yeah.
I would concur.
So I see that in two places at the moment, the purpose and the scope.
Okay. We'll, we'll fix it again.
I just want to make sure it's not again. The rest of the language seems to state employees, so, okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any more clarification, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 11, discussion or action regarding payment for jail and Sheriff's Office employees working mandatory dispatch overtime because of open positions. Chief Trevino asked me to put this on. I'll let him state where we're at.
Well, same, same tune from about two years ago. We were hired up in dispatch, and we are now in a, in a critical position again. We've had, we currently have three vacancies, and this, just for scope of it, we have a total of 12 dispatchers and one supervisor in the division, so 13 total positions, and currently we have three vacancies. We have one leaving in February that is going to a law enforcement academy, and so we're already aware of that. We also have another one that is, has already given a notice, so we're, we're sitting on three, and we'll, we'll have five within February, out of your 13 positions. We are at a, a critical staffing level with, once we, once we get into February, and so we're asking that we have the ability to use CID employees, jail employees. We had a successful program two years ago where we were allowed to use employees from other divisions to, to be call-takers, so that the dispatchers continue to, to do their call-taking. There is, there is a, a plan forward in that we also have, the, the numbers that I gave you, we have three that are currently in training, the FTO program, so that we have hired, and they're, one of them is almost off of FTO, but the other two are pretty much in the middle of about a six-month period. So those that are, are fully trained and operational dispatchers are also currently sitting with somebody, training them as they're going through this process. So, so relief is in sight in that we will have shortly three more fully trained dispatchers, and our goal is to, one, bring the, the temporary other employees in to fill as, as call-takers only. They've already, the, the ones that we're looking at have all already been approved, have all already done call-taking in the past, and we currently have four applications that we're setting for interviews, and the idea is hopefully, depending, and that's already narrowed down from the list of applications that we received, to be able to potentially hire three of the four, and to hire those three as call-takers, and relieve the, the necessity to have other, other, other departments filling in as call-takers. The process has started, but we're asking for, I believe, we can potentially get it done in a month, but I would ask that we have a period of up to three months in order to use other departments to cover dispatch call-taking, and at the rate of pay that they currently receive, not, not as a dispatcher rate.
Which on that note is why this comes up for a vote, because some are paid higher than a dispatcher rate, so.
That's correct, and, and, and quite frankly, each position that would be coming in to dispatch would be coming at it, in at a higher rate. The, the officers that we've identified at the jail, one of them's a sergeant, and she does a very good job with call-taking. One is in CID, so she's at a sergeant rate as well, and so it's going to, it's going to be all hands on deck back there, but, but in order to, to, that, we will not get volunteers to do call-taking if, if they're, if they're going to be at the dispatch rate.
Is there any issues, Karen? We've done this before to, as a temporary.
What happens with FLSA is dispatch earns overtime at 40 hours a week, anything over 40 hours a week. The jail and law enforcement earns overtime at anything over 86 hours in a bi-weekly period. If, what you have to do, and when you, when you calculate for FLSA, is you have to take the, overtime is dictated by the position where the majority of the hours are worked, and then your overtime rate is calculated at the average of, one and a half times the average rate of pay. As long as you are paying, if you want to pay at the, their currently hourly rate, and one and a half times their current hourly rate, you just have to make sure that we are at least meeting or exceeding FLSA. So if FLSA calculations is greater, then we have to go with FLSA. FLSA will let you pay more, but you cannot pay less than FLSA.
And all of this is considered overtime?
Yes, sir. They would, they would be doing it on off, on a, on a, on a day off. As much as, obviously, we would limit as much overtime as we can, but if we've, and one of the sergeants at the jail, the last time we did this, she, she volunteered pretty much every day that she worked, that she wasn't working at the, at the dispatch center.
At the jail?
Right, she, she went, yeah, she worked at the jail as a booking officer, sergeant, and on her days off, she worked as a dispatcher. And so that would meet, she, her, her primary hours were from the jail, and she would meet the overtime rate for, for a full-time position.
Both positions need to be filled. Do those folks understand the, the formula that the auditor's office has to abide by?
Yes, sir. We, yes, sir. There, there was some confusion on the last time on, on how those hours worked, because some of them actually turned out that we were able to fill the positions at the jail or in, in CID, with not giving them a caseload, and they were doing their primary hours for dispatch, because we were, we were so desperate to have a, you know, someone working that was familiar with the process and had taken, had done call-taking before, and this, this allowed them to then have the bulk of their hours in dispatch rather than at their full-time job. So yes, we, we will, we will ensure that those that are, that are volunteering understand that their primary responsibility will still be at their current position in order for them to receive the, the payment at their full-time position.
Any more questions, comments, or motions?
Well, how do we, how do we cover the cost? Is this going to be done large, are we going to be able to use some of the monies that was, for the, that it's dedicated for the vacant positions to cover some of that? I realize that you're talking about an expense greater than a normal, because it's at one and a half times a rate, but.
When we did it last time, did we have to do a budget amendment? Or did it work itself out with the vacant positions and the budgeted overtime?
If I recall, it worked itself out with the vacant positions in dispatch that that was allowed to be rolled over into the payment for the overtime.
Those are already budgeted positions, so that's good.
At this point, of course, it's early on in the year, so they haven't exhausted their overtime budget. So I could not comment on whether they would go over their overtime budget by implementing this. But later on in the year is when you know.
Gil Jones again, two questions, one from Ms. Smith. In the timekeeping system, can you track separately that that overtime is being used in this position versus their normal position? And is there a need to do so? And a question for the chief. I think if a call goes unanswered, say, because there aren't enough people, it automatically rolls over to other places, I believe, and rolls over to like Marble Falls and other call centers. Is that a sufficient coverage of some of that time or not?
It doesn't roll over to Marble Falls. We keep the call. It remains a Burnet County dispatch call. And regarding the, again, the payment of when the, I guess, closing the year and whether we have the openings or not. We are early in the budget year, and we have historically had budgeted for $60,000 in overtime for dispatchers. And last year, we hit $180,000. There was a request to increase that, last budget cycle that didn't happen. And we are on pace right now to continue at that $180,000 in overtime. Those hours are covered through the rollover of open positions from dispatch to cover that overtime.
And then the second part of his question, tracking it and time clock?
The system already has that.
We'll know that they're in CID.
That's correct. The system already has the ability to separate that.
On this rollover, I may have spoken about it rolling to Marble Falls. But for instance, if your call center is totaled down, yours is going to go somewhere.
Sure.
If the system does.
If you recall, last, the last board meeting, or the last commissioners' court, I mentioned that our calls are answered, 90, almost 98% are answered within the first 10 seconds. So it's, this is not an issue. We have, they're call takers for a purpose. And our dispatchers, dispatch center does not just have one officer, one dispatcher in there. Our purpose is to have three dispatchers in there as call takers, as dispatchers, and they rotate the seat when they're fully trained. We're just not in the position. So the calls are not rolling anywhere. We are answering all the calls that come into 911 into the Burnet County Dispatch.
But if there was, they would roll over to, if there was a problem in the dispatch?
Well, and I'll say there has been a problem whenever phone systems with, within Burnet County went down. Yes, they have to roll over to the next jurisdiction that would answer phone calls, but that's.
If it was a fiber optic or something?
That's correct. There was a bird or a nest inside one of the panels that knocked the phones off the system.
Okay. Any more questions? And let me backtrack. Do we have a motion and a second? We don't, okay. Any more questions, comments, or motions?
I would move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, anything further? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 12, discussion or action regarding the approval of bonds for Karen Smith, our purchasing agent. Miss Stafford has the bonds.
Vicenta Stafford, county clerk. It is just one bond. I believe this year Karen is adding a bond as the purchasing agent. Is that correct?
Yeah, it was, in prior years, it was combined with the county auditor's.
Yes. So she has a continuing certificate for being the county auditor, but this bond is specifically for the purchasing agent portion, and y'all are just signing off on it.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve the bond for the purchasing agent. All those in favor, any more questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Damon Wall, I'm up here.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe it was item number 14.
14, discussion or action regarding.
Was that the preliminary plat?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify because I believe you said, Ms. Kope asked if those were digital. The preliminary plats are not filed of record anywhere. They are put into my office, into a filing cabinet, and nothing becomes official record until a final plat is filed. So that will never be attached to my minutes. I just wanted to clarify. The action taken to approve the preliminary plat is put into the minutes, but the actual plat is not filed in the minutes or recorded in the minutes, nor is it filed in the official public records until it becomes a final plat.
I can see that.
But it is available for public information.
Yes. They just have to come to the office and ask to see a preliminary plat, and my staff will get it out of the cabinet and show it to you. It's, we don't make copies of it because it's not official record. But they can look at it, see it, examine it all they would like. But it is not made official record-wise until the final plat. I just wanted to clarify that.
No, that makes sense, thank you. Okay. 17. Does anybody want to take a break?
That'd be great, good. You got a five-minute break.
Let's take five, everybody, okay?
Five minutes, thank you.
All right. We'll come back from break at 10:24. Okay, we're officially back from break at 10:25. And we're going on to number 17, Discussion or Action Regarding Budget Interdepartmental Line Item Transfers. Any questions or comments on these?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 18, Discussion or Action for the Authorization of Payments of Claims Previously Approved by the County Auditor. These are our basic bills.
We have prepaid's in the amount of $463,598.41. We have claims in the amount of $3,979,660.24. And we have payroll in the amount of $1,513,047.23.
Any questions, comments, or motions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, number 19, Discussion or Action Regarding FY25 Budget Amendments. Karen, you want an overview of these? There's not a lot of it.
Yes, there were, there were two budget amendments added after the agenda was posted. One is for $25,700, moving from non-departmental professional services to sheriff's office professional services. And that's for the Motorola contract that you'll be, that is upcoming under the contract section. And there's also one moving from non-departmental, non-departmental professional services to the IT light support and like, I'm sorry, it's moving from IT professional services to IT support and licensing fees in the amount, in the amount of $12,000. And that's also for, that's the unitran contract that you'll be considering in the contract agenda item.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or motions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, any further questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any, let's see, 20 Discussion or Action Regarding Departmental Asset Transfers?
We do not have any asset transfers this week.
We do not have any? 21, Discussion or Action Regarding Departmental Updates, number A is the sheriff's office.
Just want to give a couple of updates on a few of the departments. And start with, we did some corporal boards. Two weeks ago, we identified, we had 10 applicants for corporals. And we identified four corporals that will be activated immediately. And then we have two of those that will go on a one-year waiting list. In the event that we have some movement, sergeant moves and a corporal, we will have a sergeant board and we'll fill those. But we'll have two that will be on a one-year waiting list to fill, fill those positions. On training, I'm sure you're aware of the, the training, academy training that the sheriff's office operates. And I'm just going to give you some raw numbers. We trained in fiscal, in calendar year 2024, we trained 763 students. We provided 4,476 course hours. And contact hours, the number of hours that those students, that those students gained through coming through the Burnet County Sheriff's Academy, 12,292 hours. So we do a lot of training throughout the year. We train not only our own officers, jailers, we also train a lot of other entities, law enforcement entities from all, from all around. And it really depends on the topic that we're providing, on who's attending. But we've got a, we've got a course scheduled for, I believe, next week that has, that's, it's, it's, we only wanted 20 in the class and we've got 22. And that, I believe that's only two of ours and 20 from other counties, cities, and state agencies that are coming to our trainings. Next, I'm going to move to your question from last time, the commercial motor vehicle enforcement. And also with these numbers, also understand that, that we only had one, and this will be for calendar year 2024 also, not fiscal year, but calendar year. During the bulk of that, we had one CVE deputy. And then through budget, we obtained a second CV deputy. Of course, there was a training, a period of going through interviews and getting that person identified. And so the numbers are going to be a little obviously skewed because they're, they're, this officer really wasn't even available to, to start stopping commercial motor vehicles until November and by the time he was licensed and selected to be at the position. So the numbers will be somewhat skewed. We did, just in Burnet County alone, we did 1,078 warnings, 77 citations, and 1,155 total contacts for, and a contact is considered a warning or a ticket. Those numbers may seem, again, you're talking about one deputy that did the bulk of those. And that one deputy also had knee surgery and was out for four months out of that, out of that calendar year. So those numbers, again, are going to be skewed. And Deputy Molina did not come on board until after the calendar year. Of those numbers, the ones that we're seeing the most, without a doubt, equipment is the, is the number one reason for, for a warning or citation. The number one is 939 equipment warnings. And then on, sticking with the warnings, the next one would be registration, a lot of registrations that are expired. And then three, operating authority, and what, under what operating authority were they, were they transporting? Move to citations, the number one is the operating authority with 16. Number two was the equipment violations, which is, is brakes, your tires, the things that, that we're wanting to keep safe vehicles out there. And then number three, it was actually a tie with equipment is the registrations also. So we see a lot of commercial vehicles without valid registrations. If we then move to, our county also participates with tasks, task force. We have, we, the counties that we participate with are other law enforcement agencies are Williamson County, Travis County, DPS, Burnet County, Leander, the city of Leander, the city of Round Rock, and the city of Cedar Park, and then Lano also assists. The numbers that I'm going to provide are only for Burnet County numbers. So when, when our CVE deputies go to Williamson County to work at task force, they count their, those task force numbers. And then when all they, everybody comes to ours, they, we can't, we are allowed to count those task force numbers for Burnet County. We had 98 warnings for task force, 81 citations, for a total of 179 contacts. We took 13 drivers out of service. And we took 29 vehicles out of service in those contacts. And so understanding what happens with that, if you take a driver, the truck is still drivable, most cases it's going to be both. But in vehicles out of service mean there was something, indicates that there was something mechanically wrong that would, that we are not allowing those vehicles to continue to roll down the road. Questions on CD? And those numbers should increase. Again, we're, we're working with one vehicle still, two, two separate, two separate deputies out of, out of separate vehicles. So they, they're not, one of them, one of them's still calling trucks and then they'll, they'll move to that vehicle. So they're working as a team right now, but the intent is obviously for them to both be working with their own equipment out of their own vehicle and only need assistance when, when the situation calls for it.
I think it's worth noting that those traffic stops are not like your average traffic stop.
Can last an hour?
Don't know the difference, which, you know, it takes quite a bit longer, you know, I don't know, 30 minutes, maybe an hour.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. And we did just have a, we did just have a task force. And then the other, the other bill is you have to look for where you can actually have a task force. Where in Burnet County is there sufficient place to pull a number of, of commercial motor vehicles off the road in order to do the inspections? And we, we have been pretty consistent with doing them at the, at the TexDOT yard here off of 29. The next area is courthouse security for 20, 24 stats. The number of people that came through metal detectors in the north annex was 31,469. The number of weapons intercepted at the north annex by itself was 454. Of those numbers, five were guns, 353 knives, 55 pepper sprays, and 41 other category. And those are brass knuckles, cooperons, knitting needles, those, yes. We, we keep those out of the courtroom, so. The number of arrests by courthouse officers, we, the courthouse security alone made 507 arrests in calendar year 2024. That's pretty significant. In fact, in that, in 2023, we only made 284. And in 2022, we made 175. So the numbers are significantly increasing. The number of days that the south annex was unmanned by courthouse security was 79. And we, and thank you all again for giving, for, for providing two more courthouse security officers that helped significantly. But that's, that's what that number is. When, when we are short on staff, we, we pull to the district courts or pull to the, to the county courts with the officer, the, the officers that we have. And so, and, and again, we just picked up those two officers and we are, by the way, we are full in courts. We are, we are, we took those positions. We've got, we, we, effective, I believe it was today? Yesterday? Yesterday was the first day that our, our last position was open. So we are full in courts. We should see that number next year, or this current year significantly decline. The last one I'm going to cover, and I actually hope at some point to provide a, a more thorough update on this is the drones. You know, I'm very passionate about how we, how we've been handling drones. In calendar year 2024, a total, the total number, total drone flights were 368 total drone flights. And total drone flight hours is 82.82 hours of flight time for those drone operators. The types of missions that we have, that we attended, we, we, we are getting great feedback. In fact, we're, we are doing such, doing norths and souths and eights and east and west informationals for volunteer fire departments on letting them know what we're capable of and that they need to be, they can call us to provide an overwatch during an active fire. We've worked with Derek on, on when, and, and these officers are able, these fire departments are able to call us and have the authority to get a drone out. So if they get to the scene, and obviously a lot of times our officers are the first ones on the scene as well, they have the authority to call a drone out. And we have a number of drone operators. We are in the, we are now in the habit of our sergeants that are on duty having a drone in their vehicle. A number of, I don't believe all of our sergeants, but a number of our sergeants are drone operator. So on every shift, we've got somebody that can cover it. We also have drone operators at the jail that we can also pull out to, to assist. The types of, so the number one, one of them is fires. We attended six fires for missions. Other law enforcement entities that we assisted, 15. Community relations, three. Training flights, nine. Natural disasters, two. Search and rescue, three. And special events, two. For a total of 40 missions that we flew that were specific for those types of events. And as I said, I would, at some point, like to be able to demonstrate the capabilities of drones. We are, we are using them on these, on raids that we do for early overwatch on those so that we are protecting our officers going into the, onto the scene. We're flying them in, in with, with overwatch once we break into a door. And it's, it has been, it has changed the game on how we can safely go after, after bad guys and, and, and bring, bring our guys back. And it gives us a great advantage to decide whether or not to call a mission and, and/or go forward with it. Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll note for the record that Commissioner Luther had to step out for a moment. He should be back shortly, but we're going to continue. 22, we have acknowledgement of receipt. The number A, or number A, letter A, the MIS summary is our trapper's report. B is TCQ notice permit number WQ00015613001. C is the same TCQ permit number, but it's the revised version. We received both, so we put them both in the record. And those are, just so that you know, our wastewater, a wastewater plant down in the southern end of the county. D, Marble Falls Area EMS January Updates. E, Acceptance of Reports of County Officials as Required by Local Government Code 115 Previously Examined by the County Auditor. And this is the county auditor's December report. No action to be taken on those, just that we received them. 23, Discussion or Action Regarding Contract, Contracts, Agreements, or Grants to Be Approved and/or Ratified. A, Approval of the Work Order with KC Engineering for Engineering Services for Paving County Road 410 to be Paid out of Precinct 4 FY22 Tax Notes. I'm going to tackle these individually and we'll vote on them individually too, because there's just so many of them. Jim, that's some tax note work that you got done, or you're getting done? I mean, docry.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir, we, Cannon Road 410, we paved that, I believe, in 2015. And it's time for preventative maintenance. So we're going to come back and take care of that and providing engineering services to do that.
Okay.
I'd move for approval.
I'll second. Go ahead.
Second.
Any more discussion or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? B is going to be our UniTrans cloud co-termed proposal. And that is our cloud-based storage. It's a pretty basic. It's budgeted for, is that correct?
The budget amendment, you just passed a budget amendment that will cover this.
Okay. Move for approval?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's see here, the rest are grants. I am going to do all the grants in one for this C through H. I'm going to read them out. C is approval to sign and apply the resolution for continuing the Burnet County Courthouse Metal Detectors and Panic Button Project for the FY26 Criminal Justice Grant Program. D is approval to apply and sign the resolution for the Burnet County Cyber Security Assessment and Evaluation Project for FY26 State and Local Cyber Security Grant Program Assessment and Evaluation with the Office of the Governor. E is approval to apply and sign the resolution for Women's Victim Advocate Project for FY26 Violence Against Women Justice and Training Program Grant. F is approval to apply and sign the resolution for the Burnet County Cyber Security Governance and Planning Project for FY26 State and Local Cyber Security Grant Program Governance and Planning. G is approval to apply and sign the resolution for the Burnet County Cyber Security Mitigation Project for FY26 State and Local Cyber Security Grant Program. H is approval to apply and sign the resolution for Burnet County Cyber Security Workforce Project for FY26 State and Local Cyber Security Grant Program. I'm going to stop there. Those are all with Ms. Teague. And is there any questions within any of those gentlemen? I know they're in your packet, and so you have them.
We're just approving to apply for it right now.
That's what these are, yes. That's correct. I'll note Commissioner Luther is back in attendance.
Not wanting to enlighten you, Mr. Where we are on the agenda.
We're on contracts. Right now, we're currently 23 C through H, which is the, the grant portion.
Okay.
That we're applying for the grants listed C through H.
I would move for approval of C through H, 23 C through H.
I'll second.
Any more comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those pass. Okay. 23I, Approval to Sign the Reliable Tire Agreement for the Trailer Tire for the Bo Pate Collection Event Scheduled for April 26, 2025. Bo Pate, standing for battery, oil, paint.
Antifreeze.
Antifreeze, tires, and electronics, thank you. And so this is a, they've been providing this, is there any, there's no changes?
No.
Okay.
They're doing it for the same amounts they did for the last collection event.
Okay.
I would, I would move for approval of 23I.
Second.
Motion second, any more questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, J is approval to accept the grant and sign the gift agreement for $60,000 from the Mitt Foundation 2025 Funding Cycle for the Bertram Library for a conference room pod, patio furniture slash awning cover, and a mural in the children's area. I know Mary from the Bertram Library is here. If there's any questions for this, or if you have any comments, please feel free. Okay. I'll move to accept that grant.
I'll second it.
Any further questions on this one? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, any opposed? Motion passes. K, Approval to Accept the FY24 State Criminal Alien Assistance Program Grant, SCAAP. And it's for the amount of $12,731. And this is federal assistance that comes through us for housing ICE inmates. Is that accurate, Ms. Teague?
Inmates that were born outside of the country. But they also have to have a certain amount of time. So like the lower levels, like if they're there for one day and immediately go back to ICE, then they don't get counted.
Okay.
But it's a, it's a formular grant.
Okay.
It happens every year.
Good. Any questions, comments, or motions?
Move for approval. Okay, 23K.
Second.
Any more questions?
There is no signature, it's a, it's a quartal.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Last one, and the 23Q, Approval of the Service Agreement with Motorola Solutions for Astro SUA 2. So this is part of the Gator system?
You can't talk to me that way.
Can't talk without it. So this is just a renewal? Is there anything?
It's a, it's a renewal or approval to, to pay the invoice?
This is, yeah, this is the one that came up last year several times.
Yes.
That wasn't budgeted for, in the amount of $25,000. It wasn't budgeted for again. And so we are, it's in the line item transfers, you'll see the budget, or I'm sorry, the budget amendments. We are taking that money from professional services to cover it, so that way we don't see an interruption in services. And I had a meeting and a conversation with Western Towers to kind of get a feel for this. And this is the, the side of it that cities and, and other counties are, will not, Lano hasn't done it yet because they, they don't, they're not a part of it. But the cities pay for their portion and we'll pay for ours. And then if there's any amendments, once they convene an exec, their executive meeting, there could be some changes to this. But this is a bill that I felt like needed to get taken care of so that we don't lose anything, because last year was a.
And just to be clear, earlier on item 19, there was some discussion about professional services moving to the sheriff's office for a later item. Is this that item and what funding source is being used to cover this?
It is that item, and it's professional services, which is non-departmental professional services. Correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
And we have, we have this earmarked as a recurring cause now for our budget.
We will, we will need to budget for it if that is going to be a cost that the county is going to cover if Western Towers does not cover it.
Yeah, this, this one will be. I had a similar conversation with a representative for the western region tower system. And, and yes, this is not one that we're looking for any other entity to pick up. So we will need to make sure that that is earmarked and put into our budget.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, any more questions or comments on this, on this subscription? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 24, Discussion or Action Concerning Calling for Bids and Bid Openings. Request for Proposals, Qualifications, and Related Openings. A is an award. A is an award 25-5120-01, the Burnet County inmate commissary services to KEIF commissary network. Megan.
Good morning, commissioners. Megan Schuman from the Burnet County Auditor's Office. We had put out an RFP for Burnet County inmate commissary services, and we received two responsive proposals. We did have an evaluation committee, and they did come back with a response to recommend KEIF commissary network.
Okay. Is this a reaward, or is this the same vendor we've had, or a new vendor?
It's a, they're in.
And you're good? Jail's good, Matt's good? Okay. All right. Any questions, comments, or motions?
Move for approval, agenda item 24.
Motion second. Any more questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, calendar review, number 25. I know our emergency management coordinator had to leave, but he wanted me to let you guys know that on, I thought it was in my calendar, but on February...
February 8th, I think.
It's February the 8th at AgriLife, it's a fire mitigation seminar, and so the public is invited to attend. You can go to our Facebook page, I think we posted about that, it'll be on our website.
Two sessions.
There'll be two sessions that day, identical sessions, right?
One is 10 to 11:30, and I think the other one's...
Apologize? Let's see. I thought it was in my calendar. Look at my email.
Yeah, one is 10 to 11:30, I know that, I've got that, but unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to attend that.
Here it goes. Derek sends a lot of emails. Let's see here.
Got it.
10 to 11:30, 1 to 2:30, is that what you said?
1 to 2:30. No, I didn't, I couldn't remember the second one.
Okay. And then both presentations will cover the same information, it's just two opportunities to attend, and we have a flyer, and we'll get those on our website and Facebook pages.
Texas Forest Services conducting that.
Let's see here, yeah.
In conjunction with our emergency management coordinator.
Yeah. This is on the heels of all the devastation in California with their wildfires, wildfire outbreaks, so this is an attempt to help educate the public on that.
Does this need to be a workshop, or are you all clear from the call?
I won't be able to attend.
I can't attend either.
I've got to.
Ms. Cope, sorry, I noticed you moved. I was just curious if you had any questions. Going to go ahead and ask you.
I just wanted to say, thank you for the, can we put this on the calendar? Patty Cope, I'm just an interested person in Burnet County. Can we put on the calendar to thank Karen for the balance sheet, and thank you all for your transparency?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Noted. Thank you. Anything else? Let's see. The usual community events. 'Tis the season, I can tell you all, for a lot of things going on. This Saturday is our Casa Boots and Barbecue. It is our 10th annual at Horseshoe Bay Resort. Next Feb, next Saturday, the 8th, Ocala Library is having their annual Dutch oven cookout. You can head over to the Ocala Library and enjoy some Dutch oven stuff, and it's also the Burnet CISD Education Foundation's inaugural gala. So that's a good thing. Purse Bingo for the Hill Country Children's Advocacy Center is February 22 at Horseshoe Bay, well-attended. I will also state, February 18, 19, and 20 is the VG Young School for County Commissioners and Judges in College Station, and I believe we will all be in attendance. Anything else, guys? Anyone want to promote? It's a little further down, but the county employees donated to this. March 29, you can mark your calendars for the Donald Fawcett Day of Service. There's going to be a bed build where Sleep in Heavenly Peace comes, and they're going to, we're going to try to build, I think we're going to try to build 50 this year, we built 40 last year, it's quite a process, so volunteers are welcome that day to come. Let me know. We do that in memory of Donald Fawcett, and then we're also going to have a fish fry that day to, for his scholarship fundraiser, so that's a great rotary and Sleep in Heavenly Peace combined effort.
29, March?
That is March the 29th.
What the?
So we start building beds at 8:00 AM at Wallace Riddell Park under the pavilion. And those guys from Marble Falls, and Eddie's on there too, oh, Eddie's gone, but Eddie's on there too, they have got it figured out. And don't come with your own plans to build a bed, because they are going to ignore them. They've got it structured, and you're building it their way. So, and use their tools and all that good stuff. You don't have to bring anything but an open mind and a happy heart. How about that? Anything else? Anybody else want to promote an event? The next thing will be the workshop on February the 6th at AgriLife for the judge applicant. So if there's nothing else, I will adjourn this meeting at 10:56. Oh, that looks like fun.